Yeah.
Welcome. Welcome, everybody. This is the Roxbury and the White, of course, Commission. This is a public hearing, special meeting, September tenth, two thousand and twenty-four, Roxbury Town Hall. Purpose of this public hearing is to solicit information on the application for Bid A Weed LLC, sixty-five Minor Bridge Road, construction of an eight-bedroom dwelling with sanitary system, well, grading and driveway. Okay, Julie, did we do a legal notice?
Legal notice was in voice, was published in voices on August twenty-eighth and on September fourth.
Okay, notification of abutters?
Yes, the abutters were notified.
Okay. How many were there?
Looked like there were eight.
Eight, wow. Application presentation will be next, but first, I just want to remind the Commission on the public hearing, you're here to listen. We're not here to make opinions.
See this verse.
Oh, yeah, I could do that one before we.
Oh.
I've just given out information. So we're here to listen and just take in the information. So you're basically like a jury where you're taking in the information, you have to make a decision on it. Mr. Kelly has asked me to state on the record any communication I had with either expert, that would be Michael Klein and Steve Trinkus. I've had no communication with either verbally or any other way. I sent, Mr. Kelly or the town sent, I wasn't even involved in gathering up the emails, and all those emails were, I assume, sent to Mr. Kelly by you, Julie?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So there's been no communication other than those emails, and the only reason for the emails was to solicit to see if they're available and to provide a cause so I could provide it to the applicant and to let them, once that was understood, to let them know when the meetings were. They did attend the last meeting because I was under the impression from the Commission that we, during a special meeting, that we decided to hire consultants, that Michael Klein and Steve Trinkus were acceptable to the Commission. I would assume that the Commission would want them at the first meeting because the applicant was giving a presentation. That's why they were here. I guess I was supposed to ask, in thirty years I haven't done that, but I'm sure, to the Commission, I'll seat you now so we could discuss. Go ahead, Rob.
Rob Horrigan.
John Smollega.
Sue Bitch.
Deirdre.
She's on mute.
Deirdre, just say you're here.
She's on mute.
Yeah, she's muted.
You're on mute? Oh, she's probably playing the slot. Okay. And I'm Russ Dorenzo, I'm Chair of the Commission. We do have a quorum for members that are here, our permanent, regular members, voting members. Deirdre's an alternate. She's kind of, she is new and wouldn't be able to be involved in this anyway because she was new when this public hearing started. So, hi, Deirdre, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think the public hearing is starting tonight.
Right.
So, yeah.
So, tonight it begins.
I have a question. If she listens to all the tapes, can she participate?
Oh, she could participate, she can't vote.
I anticipate.
Yeah. I thought you said she couldn't.
I read this wrong. It's if she was new tonight for the beginning of the public hearing, you can't vote. So I'm reading regulations. Okay, so Paul, Mr. Shemansky, first I want to ask the experts that we've retained, would you state your name and what your qualifications are? We'll start with Steve.
Steve Trinkus, I'm a licensed professional engineer in Connecticut since nineteen eighty-eight. I'm also an expert in low-impact development, which is a focus on water quality and runoff volumes. Gail McTaggart's suggestion, they have a copy of my CV for the record. I also emailed Julie an electronic copy for the file, so, well, thank you.
Thanks.
Is Mr. Klein here?
I am. I'm Michael Klein. I'm a biologist and soil scientist, registered professional soil scientist and professional wetland scientist. My office is in West Hartford. I have about forty-odd years of experience advising applicants and commissions and federal and state agencies on the environmental impacts of development projects.
Mr. Chairman, can I just add briefly?
I just wanted for Paul.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Paul, would you state your qualifications for the record, please?
Paul Shemansky, licensed professional engineer in the state since.
And is your environmental consultant here, or are you?
He's not here today.
Okay.
This Dr. Danza.
Okay, okay, Jim.
I just wanted to, Jim Kelly, attorney from Washington, Connecticut, representing the applicant. I just wanted to confirm or clarify what I was asking in regards to the emails.
Yeah.
What I was seeking was just, because this is a public hearing, because of the Public Records Acts and Sunshine laws, that communications outside of a meeting with the consultants all be by email, and the emails, a copy of them be provided to the applicant. That's what I was asking. It was not a, it was not an inquisition of you personally. In fact, I had, I had suggested that the communications, I thought, could appropriately go from the EO to the consultants. So when the Commission has questions for a consultant, they can certainly speak to them during the meeting, but when they are communicating with any, with the consultants outside of a meeting.
Yeah.
We just asked that it be by email, and then a copy be provided to us. And Turnip McTaggart doesn't think she may dispute whether we're entitled, and says they're administrative, and they may very well just be administrative, but that's the only way we know that they're administrative, is if we get to see them, so.
So you know that now?
Yeah, so, and then I just wanted to say to Ms. Katie, if, if she sent an email with.
I misspoke. Actually, I sent it to Ms. McTaggart. I was busy writing.
Yeah, so I've not received any copies of any emails between commissioners or the consultants, and I would like to.
I thought you had them. For the record, Gail McTaggart, I thought you had them. I'm happy to.
Oh, yeah, he should. I thought he had them.
Yeah, I'll forward them to you. And they will reflect exactly what the Chairman was just saying.
Right, and I wasn't involved with gathering them. I told Julie to take any email and send it to Gail.
I'm sure it was just administrative in how it didn't get to me. Just making sure that it does.
Because if you read them, there's really nothing there.
Thank you.
Okay, Paul, long day.
Good evening. For the record, Paul Shemansky again, representing the applicant. Six public hearings starting, subject property. No, not at all. No, unless my breath's bad, otherwise you're gonna. Subject property is located on Myers Bridge Road, just to orient everyone, the Roxbury Falls is located to the east or right of the map, and Berry Road is located on the left side of the map or the west side of the map. So the overall holdings of the owners is a little over a hundred and fifty acres in Roxbury, and there's about an additional ten acres in Bridgewater as well. So the proposal calls for the construction of a new home down near the Chappau. There's no activities up along Berry Road at all, and the only activities off of Minor Bridge is to come off an existing driveway that already exists. As we indicated prior to the open of the public hearing, we're proposing a single-family home with a proposed well, leaching field, and driveway associated with it. As part of it, we have a deck at the rear of the residence in two areas and a patio. Stormwater is generally discharged to three places. There's an area southwest of the home, which takes the runoff of the westerly portion of the home and the westerly portion of the driveway. There's a drainage system located to the east, northeast of the home, that handles the driveway runoff on the eastern part and northern part of the north of the home, and that handles the central portion of the house roof runoff as well. Then there's a small little infiltration system located on the east side of the home that handles the east wing in a small portion of the central southern portion of the house. As you know, we had previously applied for an permit on the site. Since that time, originally, just so everyone knows where we were, at that point, we had a home that was one level. As we discussed prior to the opening of the public hearing, this house was changed so that there's a walkout at the rear of the house, which decreases the grading activity in the rear. It allowed us to move the grading activity further away from the Chappau. We also incorporated a retaining wall, which acts as a physical barrier and decreases the limit of disturbance. We received comments from Mr. Trinkus and from Mr. Klein, so I will go through those now, just so everyone can see. We've made some very minor revisions to the plan. Watch out, watch out details we go over. And I'll give electronic copies for Mr. Klein as well. So, the first part is, as it relates to Mr. Trinkus's executive summary, his first comment was that the proposed stormwater management system will not address non-point source pollutant load such as metal, hydrocarbons, nitrogen, phosphorus, and total suspended solids, which will be found in the runoff from the proposed impervious areas. As the stormwater management systems consist of galleries and well-trained sand and gravel, runoff and pollutants will quickly move through the soil, down the slope, and into the Chappau River. Over time, these pollutants will cause adverse impacts to the water quality in this section of the Chappau River. A description of water quality impacts for these pollutants is provided at the end of history four. So before I go into my answer, I want to bring out some excerpts of the most recent two thousand and twenty-three stormwater quality manual. As we discussed previously, this application, the permit set associated with it, was fully complete prior, prior to the date at which we would have to adhere to it, but we did tell the Commission we would make best efforts to attempt to conform to it where we could, and that is what we have. So you know the prior iteration of this was back in two thousand and four. I guess my breath was bad.
I knew I had my breath.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll bring it down next time.
Maybe it's after breath, Paul.
It's getting too loud. So what I want to do is just go through a couple portions of the two thousand and twenty-three manual, because this ties in, basically, it's Mr. Trinkus's executive summary. So when one looks at the stormwater quality manual, it looks at the standards and performance criteria that it requests that we follow to basically ensure that we're protecting resources down the radius. So when we look at table four, four dash one of the new manuals, one of the standard one is runoff volume and pollutant reduction. So it's basically to preserve pre-existing hydrology. So as part of new developments, as you can see in the central portion, it states that a hundred percent of the site's water quality volume should be retained for all new development, and that should be retained on-site. If we go to page two, it then speaks to stormwater runoff control. So we're looking at the peak quantity of runoff. So the first page was as relates to stormwater quality. So originally, it was the first one inch of rainfall represented approximately ninety percent of all storm events. As part of the two thousand and twenty-three stormwater quality manual, they researched about the last forty years of rainfall data in Connecticut, so they bumped it up to one point three inches instead of one inch. So that's a stormwater quality aspect. Then we look at the stormwater quality aspect, which is, how do we attenuate the peak rate of runoff from the property and to what extent? So in this instance, we have the developed area northeast of the house drains to this system of thirty-eight four-by-four-by-eight-foot galleries, and this area in the southwest corner drains to thirty-four four-by-four-by-eight-foot galleries, and the area at the rear wing drains to eight four-by-four-by-eight galleries. So just as a point of reference, that's about, that's eighty, eighty total galleries, and that represents about sixty twelve-hundred gallon drywells, just if you're more familiar with drywall. So what I did as part of the drainage report was I analyzed both the watershed in a pre-existing condition and the watershed in the proposed condition going to those systems. So we're capturing almost a hundred percent of all impervious surfaces in those areas, and what the manual says is that we should control the two-year twenty-four-hour post-development peak flow rate to fifty percent of the two-year twenty-four-hour pre-development peak flow rate, and that the ten-year post-development peak flow rate should be no larger than the pre-existing. And then it says potentially control the hundred-year twenty-four-hour peak flow rate in comparison to existing. So when you look at watersheds, it's quickly, I'll go over this so you guys can better understand. So this is the site. The house is in the general location between what's shown as watershed one oh one and watershed one oh three.
Oh, can you just identify which, for the record?
Yeah, existing curb number watershed map.
Thank you.
And so what we do is, we look at the different types of materials, and we'll get through Steve's letter later, and we look at how it drains to particular areas. And then we create what's called a proposed watershed map, so the proposed curb number watershed map in this instance, where we then look at which areas are draining to our detention systems. So for instance, you see watershed two oh one C. This is the area west of the house, so this represents lawn area, and it represents parking lot, and it represents a portion of the home that drains to the detention area. We then have a watershed up gradient of the driveway, which we're not disturbing in any way, we're maintaining the existing condition as it is, but we still take that into consideration. So when you look at the area that we're disturbing, the area in which we have impervious surfaces, you'll see in our drainage report, we look at the ability of those infiltration basin systems to accommodate that runoff. So what it does, and the calculation shown, the original calculations and the one we've revised for tonight's show, is that we do not meet the, we do not decrease the peak runoff by fifty percent for the two-year storm. Instead, it's decreased by a hundred percent because it's fully encapsulated within the infiltration basin system itself. And then if you read down, it says to maintain the ten-year peak flow. Instead, the detention systems fully hold the ten-year storm event. It fully holds a twenty-five-year storm event, it fully holds a fifty-year storm event. And then where it says potentially hold the hundred-year storm event, it fully retains and infiltrates the hundred-year storm event. I can honestly say, in my twenty years of practicing, I've never remotely proposed this level of detention for a single-family home, not even remotely close.
How big is the house?
It's five fifty-two hundred square foot footprint.
Footprint?
Yeah.
Okay, but it's nine thousand square?
Zero point six one acres of impervious over the hundred and sixty acres that the client retains.
Right, but the house was nine thousand square feet total, the actual square footage?
I don't know. That's not true main to ours.
Okay, but it's a five thousand square foot.
Footprint, which is, because that's the impervious surface.
How many floors is it that you said?
There's a walkout basement and two floors. Only in portions of the house are there two floors of upgrade.
With the permission, I'm just throwing this out there to try to make it easier for us to understand. He's responding to Steve's comments. Do we want to go through comments one by one? Have Steve respond so we could hear both sides of each comment, or do we want Paul to go through the whole thing and then have Steve respond? The reason why I said, because there's a lot here. Yeah, so there's a lot to take in, and then when Steve starts talking about it, you might lose focus.
Yeah, I think I would prefer go through a comment one at a time and let Paul present his, his part of it and then have Steve respond.
Do you have a problem with that?
I think that will take substantially longer. My, my hope was I could make my presentation tonight as I typically do at a public hearing. I don't think it's fair to put Mr. Trinkus on the spot to respond to some technical information that I'm providing, and then if he wants to provide comments, I'd fully expect the public hearing to be continued, so everyone has the opportunity to review the information, but if we're going back and forth, we're gonna be.
Steve, do you have a problem with responding here? Would you rather have time to think about it?
Steve Trinkus, the record is, I was just handed this, quite honestly, while I can thank Phil on my feet.
All right, no, it was just a thought.
I think from a procedural standpoint, the applicant should present their application without necessarily addressing my comments. I could then provide my comments to the Commission, and if Paul wants to then talk about his responses afterwards, that would be the typical process that is followed in many other places. And I would also agree that I think the hearing has been continued so I can take a more detailed look, because obviously there's revised plans that go along with these comments that we haven't seen at the moment.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
So I'm just gonna finish going through the manual aspect, then Steve can touch on his report and then I respond.
Okay, just an idea.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, Jim Kelly, for the record, I just want to correct, I've never seen, we have the benefit of having provided the plans and gotten the consultant's first report before the meeting tonight. So I don't think Paul, I think it's perfectly appropriate for Paul to make his presentation and address the comments that he's had the chance to review from your consultant.
Yeah.
While he's making his initial presentation, I don't think he has to not speak opposed in his initial presentation. The other thing I'm just pointing out, maybe I'm a broken record, at the last July twenty-third meeting, I said on the record that I would propose, we get you the plans, we get the consultant's report before the meeting, we have a hearing, and then the Commission decides if they want to hear more from their consultant, and then they can ask their consultant to report back at the next meeting. That's exactly what Mr. Trinkus is asking for. I was raising it because it sounded like a complete waste of time for Mr. Trinkus to be here tonight. But in any event, he's here, I'm glad he's here, he gets to hear it directly from Paul.
That's why he's here.
But, but, but I also just want to leave with one comment, and that is, this is not intended to be and shouldn't be adversarial. It's not, Paul says something and Trinkus retorts.
Who's being adversarial?
Just the way we're setting this up with this, this suggestion of comments back and forth. Let me just finish. I want Paul to do his presentation. He's incorporating Mr. Trinkus's comments. I hope that that's well-received by the Commission. I don't expect Mr. Trinkus to, I'll leave it at that, that I hope that that's well-received by the Commission, that he's addressing the consultant's comments.
I, I think that it wasn't, I think that was for the benefit of the Commissioners, because if we went through the whole thing, that we wouldn't, we might not remember everything from the beginning of his presentation, when Steve started, if Steve started talking about it. I don't think that was adversarial between the two.
No, I just don't want to create an environment where somebody feels pressured to retort something. The re-answer may be great, it's handled.
I asked the question, he answered it, we should move on.
Yes. Okay, thanks. So as I was saying, and then we look at things like the sedimentation erosion control plan, the drainage calculations that we provided. So if you go a couple sheets into page forty-six in the lower left-hand corner of the storm quality manual excerpts from the two thousand and twenty-three manual, it speaks to the water quality volume, which I think, as we all know, is the first flush principle, which assumes that most pollutants in stormwater runoff are conveyed in the initial portion of a storm event. And then when you look under water quality volume calculations, it says that the water quality volume is the volume of stormwater runoff from a given storm event that must be retained and/or treated to remove most of the post-development stormwater pollutant load on an average annual basis and to help maintain pre-development site hydrology in terms of duration rate and volume of stormwater flows. So when I did the initial three-inch calculations, I provided it for one inches, but now I updated it to one point three because as I'll, I'll show you, we're not even, we have an abundance of stormwater quality volume beyond what is required. So then we look at what standards are required, which is the next page, page forty-seven. So it says, "Stormwater management systems at the bottom should be designed to achieve the average annual pollutant load reductions from directly connected impervious area for sediment and nutrients shown in table four three." So with the new manual, we're looking at two types of impervious area. We have what's called DCIA, which is directly connected impervious areas, and then we have areas which are not directly connected, for which you're actually, sometimes we're gonna have to take into consideration as part of your calculations. Important paragraph at the bottom of page forty-seven, achieving these minimum required load reductions for sediment and nutrients is assumed to provide adequate reductions of other stormwater pollutants, including potable materials. However, it is important to note that if the full retention goal, required retention volume is met, that's that hundred percent of the water quality volume, top of page forty-eight now, then it is assumed pollutant reduction is also achieved and individual pollutant calculations are not necessary. And then when we look at the first bullet point, it says, "A proposed stormwater management system meets or exceeds these average annual pollutant loads when the required retention volume is retained on-site using suitable stormwater retention practices." And then I just included page fifty-eight, I thought that was important. That speaks to the retention or infiltration of water quality designs formed to meet the runoff volume and reduction may also reduce the peak rate of runoff for stormwater runoff quantity control design storms. So it states right in the manual that it allows you to take the water quality volume into account as part of attenuation as well. Also, if you look at the next paragraph, it says, "For impervious area disconnection, the disconnected impervious area should be assigned as curb number." So a curb number is basically how fast water goes over a surface. So something like pavement is like ninety-eight, and if you have something like woods that have a deep forest litter layer, depending on the soil type, that may be at thirty or forty. So basically, if you have a forest layer, it's going to absorb the water, it's gonna run off significantly less slow. So what it's saying in this case is, if you have a QPA, which is qualifying impervious areas, you actually get to reduce your curb number to take into considerations that that impervious surface, which is in this area upgrading of the house, is discharging into a lawn area, is actually functioning more as a lawn because it infiltrates. I point this out because in our drainage calculations, we don't reduce our curb number. Everywhere we've done our calculations are extremely conservative. Then we speak to low-impact development, so, so we look at what are the principles of low-impact development that should be considered before we create actual stormwater infrastructure. So we look at things like protecting as much open space as possible to maintain pre-development hydrology. So in this case, we have zero point six one acres of impervious surface on a hundred and sixty acres. We maximize the protection of natural drainage areas, streams, surface waters, wetlands, and jurisdictional wetland buffers. So in this case, as we, as we pointed out, I forget how many dozens of acres of regulated area that we had of which we're disturbing, I think it was one. Minimize land disturbance, including clearing and grading, so we have a little over four acres in disturbance out of our total hundred and sixty acres. Minimizing soil compaction, so we have limits of disturbance to minimize what is done on the property. Then we look at reducing impacts, produce, provide low-maintenance native vegetation, so we're keeping all the vegetation that's there to encourage water retention. We're certainly minimizing the use of lawns, fertilizers, and pesticides. Anyone who went on the site walk saw that the majority of the areas that they have developed in the property is primarily been kept as meadow as part of the new project that they did on their adjacent law. Minimize new impervious surfaces, match as closely as possible the pre-development or natural site runoff characteristics in term of volume and timing of runoff, and then managing impacts at the source, which is breaking up or disconnecting the flow of runoff from impervious surfaces by directing it to adjacent pervious surfaces, infiltrate precipitation as close as possible to the point it reaches ground using small-scale yeah, means. So now getting back to my letter. With respect to the executive summary statement. With respect to the executive summary statement. I know this is a generalized statement that provides no research or quantitative analysis to demonstrate the implied adverse impact. It is important for the commission to consider the site even prior to the introduction of the numerous drainage measures taken on this site. Let's for a moment assume that no drainage measures are proposed at all. What impacts would our impervious cover have on the wetlands, water courses and lake? In our case, we have an approximate sixty six acre property, so now I'm just talking about the lot itself, not all the lots that could be developed. Whose entire watershed trains to the wetlands and the lake. Of this approximately one point three percent on site, including existing and proposed as impervious. So then you look at the two thousand four stormwater quality manual for guidance on impacts. And I provide two point three, which shows stream impact in relation to percent watershed impervious area. So as you can see. In that chart. We have a watershed impervious area of one, it's at approximately the lowest possible stream impact, the lower left hand corner. Then when you get to an impervious area of ten percent, you have a potential for moderate impact. And when you go to twenty five percent impervious, you go to somewhere between moderate and high. Um as one can see without the benefit of drainage, the research indicates our impacts to streams as low. This is further reinforced in the twenty twenty three stormwater quality manual, which states, I quote from the manual. Municipalities and other stakeholders should therefore aim to mitigate stormwater impacts in areas with impervious coverage greater than eleven percent. To reduce the amount of stormwater pollution reaching surface waters to improve water quality. So they're recommending stormwater measures. At impervious services, which are ten percent of what we're proposing. In our proposal, we have one point three percent impervious cover on the proper. Therefore, based on the twenty twenty three manual, it does not recommend we mitigate stormwater impacts as our imperviousness is so low. Nonetheless, a significant amount of drainage measures has been proposed, which do provide pollution removal. For the commission's benefit, I've included both the permanent parts of the two thousand four manual and the twenty twenty three manual. As it relates to each of our stormwater measures and the benefits that they provide. Within Mr. Trinkus's letter, consistently stated it provided no pollutant reductions. So if we look at infiltration trenches, the O four stormwater quality manual. And you look at the key at the bottom, it shows dark blue is a significant benefit. So the infiltration trenches in the two thousand four manual provide provide significant benefit in pollutant reduction for sediments, phosphorus, nitrogen and metals. It also provides partial benefit for pathogens, floatables, oil and grease and dissolved pollutants. It states in the manual, just as it does in the twenty three manual, verbatim again. Runoff gradually propels through the bottom and sides of the trench, removing pollutants. Through absorption, trapping, straining and bacterial degradation or transformation. In the twenty four manual, they changed the format up a little bit as it relates to pollutant reduction simplified a little bit. And you can see that pollutant removal for sediment is high, which includes, you see the star, sediment bound pollutants and floatables. And then it has pollutant reduction, albeit low for phosphorus nitrogen bacteria. Then when we look at the measures for dry well. Uh it says that in the O four manual, they treat. Stormwater runoff for soil infiltration, absorption, trapping, filtering and bacterial degradation. Twenty three manual says high solids, phosphorus and bacteria removal efficiency. And it shows both significant benefits, uh both in the old four manual and the twenty three manual for multiple pollutants. When we look at deeps deep summer put in catch basins, so a deep summer put in catch basin. We have in both areas upstream of the detention areas. So basically, we make those basins deeper in size, four foot in depth. To allow us to capture suspended solids, coarse sediments, et cetera. We also have a hood on those yard drains to be able to ensure that no floatables, oil and grease. Go into the detention system, but instead they're caught within the basin itself. So that's why it states it has significant benefit for sediment removal, floatables, oil and grease. Floatables such as trash oil and grease are trapped on the permanent pool water while poor sediment sediment settles to the bottom of the catch basin itself. Then when we look at our underground infiltration system, those are those three systems that we have in the southwest corner of the house, the northeast corner of the house. And the southeast corner of the house. It states that similar to in this, the O four manual, similar to traditional infiltration trenches trenches and basins. These systems are designed to capture, temporarily store and infiltrate. The design water quality volume over several days. In the twenty three manual, it states these these systems can provide stormwater quantity control for larger storms when used in soils with high infiltration rates. Which is what we have. Or when designed with additional below ground storage, high solids, phosphorus and bacteria removal efficiency. And that's reflected in the chart itself. So as you can see, both in the O four and the twenty three manual, it consistently. Continually demonstrates the designs offer pollutant reduction in sediment, phosphorus, nitrogen, metals, pathogens, floatables, oil and grease. And dissolve pollutants with several of the pollutant categories receiving a significant reduction benefit. Executive summary B, Mr. Trinkus's comment, there has been no assessment of the non point source pollutant loads which will be generated by this project. And how the proposed stormwater management system will reduce these pollutant loads to eliminate adverse water quality impacts of the Shippensburg River. As Mr. Trinkus knows, the twenty three manual clearly states. That if we provide the water quality volume, that no such calculations are required. Especially for single family homes. Executive summary C. Mr. Trinkus notes the erosion and sediment control plan does not conform to the Connecticut D U P two thousand two guidelines for soil erosion sediment controls. As it is located above moderately steep slope, any failure of the perimeter erosion control measures will result in a discharge of urban runoff. And or sediment into the Shippensburg River, the associated millennia inland wetlands areas. I state the above statement is based on the assumption of a failure of the. Perimeter erosion control measures, which the engineer does not even state is likely to occur. You guys look at our sedimentation erosion control plan sheet S E S dot one. You'll see that there's multiple iterations prior to us even commencing the activity. First, we stake out the limit of clearing, that's reviewed with myself, the wetlands enforcement officer. Then we install the erosion controls, we have details on our plan showing how they're installed. It's then reviewed by the W E L for performance. We then added within the construction sequence that we had that we noted at the last meeting in person. That the in the erosion control measures, anytime there's a rain event of a quarter inch or greater, they're supposed to be inspected both during before. And after the storm events to ensure that before the event even can can. Starts that they're properly in, because what may happen is after Mr. Cody goes out there and reviews it. Maybe a excavator hits a couple of the hay bales and knocks them out of place. But we want to ensure that before that rain event comes, that all every single erosion control measure is in proper place. Then after those rain events occur, we then come back and we inspect all the erosion control measures. Because we know in our construction sequence that if greater than twenty five percent sediment accumulates. Behind the hay bales, for instance, that the sediment should be removed. Or maybe there was an issue that requires some sort of remediation in some way. Although the full guarantee. Although no full guarantee can ever be certain, it can be noted that all proper steps have been proposed and noted to ensure a proper installation of controls is to occur. And maintained with appropriate means and materials available if an issue does arise. It should be noted that in this assumed worst case scenario, the failure of the erosion control would occur over a hundred feet from the water course. Which the stormwater would pass through an existing and established vegetated well. The next comment was that approximately thirty one thousand square feet of the two hundred foot upland review area will be lost. As this application is subject to a public hearing, the applicant must provide feasible and prudent alternatives to development plan. It is my professional opinion that the substantial development be shifted to the north. So that all site disturbance is located outside the two hundred foot upland review area. As I'm sure the commission is aware, if the commission is to deny an application. And they believe there's a prudent and feasible alternative that exists. The statute is clear, it has to be less adverse than what we're proposing. To be less adverse, our activity would first have to be adverse. Not only does it have to be adverse, there has to be substantial evidence introduced into the record. There has to be a likelihood of it being adverse, not just the potential of it being adverse. Nonetheless. Uh when we look at the activities within this zone are regulated, but the proposed activity will not cause an adverse impact. This was discussed by Dr. Danzer in his original letter, and it was discussed in his subsequent letter, which we'll go over tonight briefly. Uh and my understanding from your environmental consultant is he's found no finding of an adverse impact to the resource as of. The last correspondence that we had with. Shifting the activity further beyond the two hundred foot review is not a reasonable alternative as it offers no direct benefit to the resource. And the required tree work to create a similar review would be more substantial and closer to the Shippensburg River. The existing hundred foot established vegetated buffer is significant handing with its native stasis. I know you don't want to discuss it, but we discussed the Randina proposal and it needs to be introduced into the record. This was a plan that was approved by this commission. It was found to be acceptable, perhaps the standards were different. However, it's important to note that plan was approved after the acceptance of the two thousand and four Connecticut stormwater quality manual. Not prior to it. So that plan that was approved in O six has to conform to the same manual that we have to conform to to that group. Several alternatives that have been suggested by the commission were incorporated into our plan from the original submission that we made six or seven months ago. This included additional erosion control measures, sequencing the construction into phases as we discussed at the last meeting, the driveway will be constructed in two phases. The house will then be a separate phase from the reaching fields, we have four separate phases. We significantly increased the size of the infiltration systems, I believe it was by over four hundred percent. We reduced the size of the patio of the southeast corner of the house to preserve a wooded buffer and a large mature tree. We placed a retaining wall at the rear of the residence to act as a physical barrier and decrease disturbance within a hundred feet of the lake. Such that there is not upgrading of the lake within a hundred feet. And then we modified the house to have a large walkout to decrease grading within the regulated area. And then get into specific comments that relates to the plans, the first is the soils map. Mr. Trinkus noted no references provided to the source of the soil boundary shown on this plan. We added a note showing there from USDA and R C S web soil survey with adjustments based on the field delineated wetlands. He notes that the boundaries of the upland soil boundaries cross over delineated inlet wetlands. This is not in use, is this not unusual, the source of the soil mapping is the soil survey. However, upland boundaries need to be field adjusted to the delineated wetlands, as I noted, we've done that. Sheet S T R M dot one, which is what you see, the scale of this plan makes reading much of the information difficult. Additionally, the size of the lettering is too small, your regulations require a plan at one one inch equals forty feet. We're proposing a plan at one inch equals forty feet. The proposed contours along the grass swale, this is Mr. Trinkus's comment, appear to show the top of the swale will be twelve inches or below the existing grade. Based upon the grading of the driveway near the grass swale, it does not appear that runoff from the driveway is being directed to the swale. Mr. Trinkus was correct. So in this case, we modified the grading of the driveway east of the grass line swale, north of the house. And then we added notes showing grade to drain to show the contractor that the intent is clearly for that portion of the driveway to drain into the grass swale. Mr. Trinkus notes no detail of the grass swale was bound on the sheet, we provided a detail of the grass swale on the sheet now. Where does the high overflow pipe from the gallery system, system A behind the house discharge to? Uh the gallery overflow pipe is to discharge at grade through vertical piping with a top up emitter at grade, as I noted, we're folding and containing. The two through a hundred year stormwaters. Comment seven, Mr. Trinkus, no inspection manuals are shown on system A for inspection maintenance purposes. Um all eastern precast four by four by eight foot galleries that are made have a twenty inch inspection cover in the center of the gallery. Just to clarify, we added that to the detail, so every single gallery, we have eighty inspection ports on our drainage system. No inverts are shown for the piping of the roof and pudding drains to either the stone French or system A. Uh we revised, that's one small revision we made, we added elevations for the specific drainage features and notes have been added stating all drainage piping is to be installed. With a minimum pitch of half a percent. Um similarly for systems B and C, Mr. Trinkus asked the same questions as it relates to inspection ports, discharges. And elevations and our answers are the same. Uh comment sixteen at the bottom of page nine. Cleanouts to finish grade or small manhole must be shown at all pipe intersections or angle points for maintenance purposes. That was fair, so we had to clean out locations designated along with a note stating the need for cleanouts at intersections and angles. Going under the next page. What is the purpose of the infiltration trench along the uphill side of the driveway? This is the, this is basically to take the any upgrading surface flow that may be coming up from the undisturbed area. With the exception of the slope grading for the slope, and it's just to ensure that it's not draining towards the impervious surface. Since there was a concern of atmospheric deposition onto the driveway itself. This ensures that any runoff that's coming from the existing area of gradient does not discharge onto that impervious surface. Comment eighteen, based upon the grading of the driveway below the infiltration trench, no runoff from the driveway will be directed to the trench. Um we we are not directing any driveway runoff to that infiltration trench, that's not the intent of it. Instead, the the driveway runoff comes down gradient to the lower infiltration trenches that are adjacent to garage. Comment nineteen, the grass swale will direct runoff to a twelve hundred gallon dry well, no detail has been provided, that's fair, we added a detail for the dry well. Comment twenty, no soil testing has been performed around the proposed dry well. So the soil conditions cannot be evaluated if they are suitable for infiltration. Uh no, we did not perform any soils testing in this area, which is why we did not take credit for this in our drainage calculations. So in our drainage calculations, we assume that twelve hundred gallon dry well doesn't even exist. We felt that was fair because we didn't do soils testing, we do know though. In every single area in which we perform test, that's we have extremely well trained soil. So if it does. If it is consistent with every single test that we performed, then it will just be even better because we didn't take it into account in our drainage calculations. Comment twenty one, according to the detail shown on this sheet for the driveway infiltration trench. The top of the crushed stone will be equal to the finished grade. Runoff from the slope above contain organic debris will fog the surface, so we added a maintenance schedule for the stone infiltration trenches. Just showing the replacement of the top crushed stone when necessary. Comment twenty two, at the bottom of the gravel, a six inch layer of sand is called out as a sand filter, this is not a sand filter for treatment of runoff. Multiple types of sand filters is found in both the O four and twenty twenty four Connecticut stormwater quality manuals. And this design does not conform to any of them. This is the correct, the stormwater manual does not, this is correct, the stormwater quality manual does include designs for multiple sand filters as primary treatment practices. The proposed primary treatment practice that is being questioned is not a sand filter but infiltration trench. The six inch layer of sand labeled as a sand filter is part of the proposed infiltration trench and is not a separate and distinct treatment feature. The placement of sand on the bottom of an excavation helps to minimize clogging of the soil interface. Encourages drain engine, prevents compaction of the native soil while stone is being added to create the infiltration trench. That was written by my professional soil scientist. The six inch layer of sand is part of the O four stormwater quality manuals can be seen in figure two dash P three dash two labeled as sand filter. Please note, as we discussed uh previously, the use of infiltration trenches does supply a significant benefit for pollutant reduction. Comment twenty three was a third.
So Paul on that. You're using an infiltrator infiltrator trench for the. Stormwater, but the sand filter is just part of that.
Uh this is the infiltration trenches adjacent to the driveway, not the infiltration system.
Right, but the sand filter that he's calling out is just part of it, it's not what you're using.
It's not the only practice.
So it's the infiltrator trench is the practice.
Correct.
And you're adding sand filter to significantly.
Basically protect the soil interface below.
Okay.
Comment twenty three, there are no provisions for handling runoff from the driveway, runoff from the driveway will have increased pollutant loads which are not being addressed. Um as discussed in the above comments, the driveway stormwater from the two forty contour down, so. We're looking at this area here where the driveways basically peel off. Uh is directed into the grass swell, lower infiltration trenches, dry well, trench drain or into the stormwater infiltration. Galleries which all offer pollutant reduction benefits as noted in both manuals. When we look at the area upgrading, we are sheet blowing off to the side, and if one looks at the twenty three stormwater quality manual. Those are all considered qualifying pervious areas. Which does not require treatment. Uh there's no treatment of the runoff proposed impervious areas proposed on the site. Increased loads of metals and hydrocarbons will be generated by vehicle traffic on the driveway. Additionally, there will be increased nitrogen and phosphorus loads from the impervious surface. According to professional literature, forty percent of our annual nutrient loads come via atmospheric deposition on the impervious surfaces, so treatment must be provided. Um as we noted, all impervious surfaces around the house development area are collected for infiltration. Now, some of the areas, like the area upgrading of the house, before, once it comes off the driveway. It comes through a existing vegetated, a proposed vegetated area and then does go into the drainage system. If you recall back in the stormwater quality manual, it states in those instances, we can actually reduce our curve number for those portions of the impervious surface. So we basically can decrease the runoff from that. As I noted earlier, we're not doing that, we kept our our analysis extremely conservative. Um and as previously stated, the infiltration systems supply the pollutant reduction. Um, and as previously stated, the infiltration systems supply the pollutant reduction through physical filtering, absorption of pollutants, subsequent biological and chemical conversions. Um, we would be happy to review the, the literature reference, but found no reference to what the research actually was. Comment twenty five, while the soils on the site are suitable for infiltration, runoff from impervious areas must be treated to reduce these pollutant loads prior to being directed to any of the infiltration trench systems as no treatment occurs within the sand and gravel layers. This is not aligned with both manuals. I showed those to you earlier in the evening where both, both manuals state that it does provide pollutant reduction. Twenty six, percolation tests were done in each of the underground gallery systems at depths of four feet, five feet, and six feet below the ground surface. Percolation tests are not the correct test to determine the infiltration capacity of the soil for infiltration practice. A percolation test measures both the horizontal and vertical movement of water in the soil. For stormwater management practices, only the vertical infiltration rate is used to model an infiltrative practice. Double ring infiltration tests, which only measure the vertical infiltrative capacity of the soil are required to accurately model. Um, we know that the infiltration test conducted for the system was a modified version of the bore hole infiltration test. That's acceptable in the twenty three manual. Based on previous experience and comparison of different testing methodologies, we have found that utilizing a four inch auger to drill to its determined depth in an excavated hole, and then we insert a schedule forty solid four inch PVC pipe with compacted soil around the top, has performed with similar results. Bore hole infiltration tests and double ring infiltrometers. Using the solid pipe with the auger holes significantly reduces and restricts the lateral flow and supplies a reasonable representation of the vertical infiltration rate. The safety factor is then added for use in the design calculations. So the safety factor that we use is two. We assume it's half of the actual exfiltration rate. SHE SES dot one. The erosion control measures consist of a row of staked hay bales adjacent to the double row of siltation fence barrier. The three barriers are next to each other. This would be considered a singular barrier, not a redundant barrier, which is more protective of the environment. Uh, we know a trenched and staked hay bale barrier followed by a silt fence with filter fabric buried and compacted into the ground and followed, followed by an additional row of silt fence with filter fabric buried and compacted into the ground is a very significant and effective single barrier, if that's what it's considered. We do show on the sedimentation erosion control plan that there is a separation between them as well. That's actually also shown on our detail. If one looks on sheet SES one, you can see we have the staked hay bales, then we have the silt fence, then there's distance between the silt fence to the next row of silt fence. Again, we noted in the construction sequence that that silt fence is supposed to be inspected by Mr. Cody prior to the commencement of construction. So he's going to ensure that the trench was properly made, that the silt fence was properly staked, that the bottom of the silt fence fabric itself was properly placed below grade in the trench and that the trench was then backfilled and properly compacted before anyone can disturb any turf on the ground. Hay bale barriers are a very ineffective erosion control measures. They are never installed properly in an excavated trench and the ends tightly budded together. Another type of erosion control needs to be proposed inside of pavings. I noted the installation of the erosion controls, including the hay bales, is to be inspected and approved by the WEO. If they are not satisfactorily installed, the contractor would be required to make adjustments. In adduction to the hay bales, as I noted, there's two rows of silt. Next comment was asking for some wings on the silt fence. So this is in areas in which the silt fence isn't parallel to the contour that may pick up a little bit of steam. Great comment. We incorporated the wings without issue. Comment thirty, the construction narrative does not conform to the requirements of the Connecticut D E P two thousand and two guidelines for soil erosion and sediment control. A much more detailed construction sequence need to be provided for a project this size. So what I did was I went to the narrative section of the two thousand and two guidelines and just quoted in verbatim. So the first section is purpose and description of the document. So that's one point one. So when that manual came out a little over twenty years ago, I created our construction narrative numbering to mimic the narrative requirements of the Connecticut guidelines for soil erosion and sediment control. So if you look, purpose and description of the project, that's one point one in the manual. It's one point one of my plans. One point two in the manual is estimates of the total area of the project site and the total area of the site that is expected to be disturbed. That was provided in one point two on my sheet. One point three is identification of site specific erosion or sediment control concerns and issues. That's one point three on my sheet. The phases of development in one point four, which is required, is shown in one point four of my sheet. One point five, the plan's starting completion dates for each phase of the start phase, the start date is provided in one point five on my sheet. And the timing of each phase is shown, uh, in the rest of the narrative. One point six, either provider identify where in the E N S plan the following information is found. Uh, one is the design criteria, construction details and maintenance program. So that's provided on sheet SES one in the lower left hand corner. One point six two, the sequence of major operations within each phase, including erosion control measures, clearing, grubbing, excavation, grading, drainage, utility, temporary stabilization, paving, parking, building, construction. So we also put that in one point six two, just like the manual notes. And that's been on there since we submitted the plan. All this has been on there. One point six three, the time and days required for major operations. So we actually show that in one point six two. So basically where we're saying, you know, we're doing something like construct drainage per plan, we show in parentheses four weeks. One point seven, identify other possible local, state, and federal permits required. This is missing. I apologize. We need health zoning in the building permit. Identify the conservation practice to be used on one point eight. That's in one point six point four on our sheet. Uh, one point nine, a listing of all other documents to be considered part of the plans, reports of hydraulic and hydrologic computations, test pit logs. Um, nothing is considered part of this plan. We do these extremely detailed drainage calculations that provide no benefit to the contractor. So we never reference them because they wouldn't understand how to read them. Comment thirty one, no construction entrances shown on this plan. Um, we added an anti-tracking pad that's ended to the end of the new driveway where it connects to an existing driveway. Thirty two, at the meeting in July, Commissioner Oregon asked how runoff from the building roofs would be handled? Where will the temporary sediment traps be located? How will the runoff from the plywood roof be conveyed to a temporary sediment trap? And where will discharge from the temporary sediment trap be directed? So we proposed four temporary sediment traps around the perimeter of the home within our existing limit of disturbance that we previously proposed. There to have a storage volume of thirty cubic yards each. There's a specific note as it points to maintenance to ensure sediment accumulation after a storm event. To a certain extent, it's been removed. We're also showing basically temporary diversions into that area graphically to ensure that it gets to the tracks. Uh, now we get to the sheets SDS and SD four, which is the septic system, which is under the purview of the Newtown Health District. Comment thirty three, the proposed pump chamber is less than twenty five feet from the catch basin on the driveway. Uh, he was correct, so we did ship that. Comment thirty four, the capacity of the septic tank and pump chamber must be defined on this sheet. It's specified on sheet SDS dot four, along with notes and details. Comment thirty five, the proposed septic system is in an area with less than desirable soil conditions. Ledge at four feet modeling eighteen to twenty four inches. Why isn't the primary reserve area located in the area of DT four, five, and six, which have more suitable soils? Uh, the proposed septic leaching field has already been approved by the Newtown Health District and meets all requirements of the health code. The leaching field is located outside of the uphill review area. Comment thirty six, the detail for the pump chamber shows a thousand gallon capacity. The capacity of the pump chamber needs to equal the size of the septic tank as required by health departments. As we noted, this was already approved by the health district. The pump chamber has two alternating pumps with connection to the emergency generator proposed. No additional storage capacity is required. Comment thirty seven is in with respect to stormwater management, uh, report. It is stated that runoff from the driveway, which is north and northwest of the proposed house will drain into the stone trench for pre-treatment. This statement is not actually correct as the grade of the driveway does not direct runoff to the stone trench, but shows that runoff will run down the driveway. Also, no factual evidence is provided as to how the stone trench provides pre-treatment of runoff. Um, the runoff does run down the driveway as Mr. Trinkus states. At the bottom of the driveway, on both the downgrading and upgrading sides, west of the garage are infiltration trenches adjacent to your train two and three to which the driveway runoff discharges. Please see earlier at the beginning where we talk about each of the measures and the pollutant benefit, removal benefits that they provide. Comment thirty eight, it is stated that runoff from the driveway, which is east and northeast of the proposed house will drain into the grass swale. This statement is not factually correct as the grade of the driveway does not direct it, uh, to the stone trench, but shows that runoff will run down the driveway. Um, and actually grass well, but, uh, we revised the grading as we discussed before. Thirty nine, it's further stated that twelve hundred gallon dry well was not modeled in the report. If there is, if there is a potential of infiltration, then the dry well must be modeled in a hydrologic analysis. I respectfully disagree. I, I don't understand that at all. Choosing not to model it because we don't have soil test results, it's only going to provide an additional benefit beyond that, which we. Comment forty, this gets a little technical, so I'm going to go a little slowly through this first comment as it relates to curve numbers. Uh, let me pull up the watershed in the existing conditions. So this was within the drainage report itself. So brush and pour condition is used for drainage area one oh one under pre-development conditions, which is not correct. Based upon several aerial photographs, the area should be considered as meadow in good condition, which will result in significantly lower runoff curve number and generate less runoff than stated by the applicant. There's clear evidence that this meadow is mowed for hay. While this area has been mowed for hay, if it was disturbed by previous work in the area, then the soil class would need to be a C or D and not a B as used by the applicant. The only way to make this determination is to perform double ring infiltration tests. Uh, this meadow has not been mowed in the over decade that I've been involved between multiple owners on this property. Uh, this whole area was overtaken by Russian olive and not been maintained for a significantly long time period. When our client brought the property approximately four or five years ago, they forest remowed the property. Then they bush hogged at once. They did nothing for multiple years. And then for the benefit of only the commission's sake, they then bush hogged it so that you could be able to walk through and see the sticks. Of the two point zero four acres within that watershed, ninety percent of it is already classified as soil class C in my report. So it's already, ninety percent of it is already classified as soil C. He's requesting we modify it to C or D. It's, it's already C, ninety percent. Um, we, we changed all of the ones that he requested. So the thirty four B soil, I think that's a marimac, has been changed to brush good and soil class C as this area was manipulated. Um, this is an area of brush invasors on the slope. So when we were walking the upper driveway and then we walked down that steep slope before we got to the lower plateau, that was the area that, that I'm discussing. Um, the thirty four C soil was changed from woods pour to woods good as this area has a full tree canopy with bare vegetation underneath it. The three oh five soil as discussed above was primarily changed to meadow. However, once I reexamined this area, I forgot that there's a large area of woods within it. So I have to adjust that curve number, which then decreases the runoff. So I never took credit for that woodland, but now I'm going to take credit. So then you can't just adjust the runoff curve numbers for the existing conditions because then that misrepresents my drainage report. I have to look at the proposed conditions as well because in our proposed defense, as you can see, for watershed two oh one, the majority of watershed two oh one isn't being disturbed. So if he's requesting me to change it to meadow in the pre-existing condition to increase the runoff in the pre-existing condition, well, then it has to increase it in the proposed condition because it's the same condition as it exists because we're not disturbing it. That's not suggested in the report, but my calculation is properly reflecting and included.
So Paul, in the end, all these changes, matter of words wasn't, really hasn't changed the calculations of the way things should be.
No, it's utterly frustrating to be perfectly honest because it changed it by a couple of percent. And I had to spend a couple of days on it to make almost no changes to the numbers at the end of the day. Because at the end of the day, if you're saying this area of land that in the existing conditions, it could be woods with forest litter, which is going to allow infiltration versus meadow, which is going to have a lot of runoff. But the majority of the watershed are not disturbing. So in the proposed condition, it's the same. So whatever it increased in the existing condition, it increased in the proposed condition because it's the same condition.
So in the end, it doesn't change anything?
No.
Okay, that's all I, that's the way I read it. I just wanted to make sure I'm understanding.
So then comment forty one and forty two is the same for the other waterships.
Right.
Where we, we revised them in the proposed condition as well. He asked that on our spreadsheet where we show the runoff curve number, we labeled the post-development ones as pre-development. So he's correct and we thank him for pointing that out and we changed the labeling of them. Comment forty four, the applicant is using unpaved as the ground condition for shallow concentrated flow. There are many other surface types to change, choose from, including woodland, grass waterway, prairie, forest litter, which affects the time of concentration. So we utilize TR fifty five to calculate runoff for shallow concentrated flow. When you do that, and it's actually confirmed in the Connecticut DOT drainage manual, it's either unpaved or paved. When you look at sheet flow, which is the portion prior. So for, for anyone who doesn't know, time of concentration. So time of concentration is basically a water drop falls in the most remote part of the watershed. And then it works its way down to the bottom. So at the beginning, at that top point, it's kind of acting as sheet flow. It's dispersed. It's not collected in any concentrated manner. So we used to model that out to three hundred feet and then quite a while ago, we changed that down to a hundred and fifty feet. So if you look in the TR fifty five manual, um, at that has different numbers. But then you go to what's called shallow concentrated flow. So you'll have areas that there's some concentrated flow, albeit minimal. Um, in calculating it, the manual only gives two choices, unpaid before paid. That's what it shows, the follow up of me. And I include in the revised drainage report, the actual excerpts from the manual so anyone can see. Um, comment forty five is the same. Comment forty six. Uh, the water quality volume is calculated and is stated that more than ample volume is being provided in the stormwater practices. However, simply providing the storage volume does not meet the requirements of the water quality value as the Connecticut D E P stormwater quality manual requires that it be captured and treated. It has not been demonstrated the water quality volume will be treated to reduce non-boat source pollutant loads as discussed above. Um, with respect to underground infiltration systems, the manual states, I quote, "Similar to traditional infiltration trenches and basins, these systems are designed to capture, temporarily store, and infiltrate the design water quality volume over several days." I then included at the beginning of my response, the twenty three manual that shows that it also is allowed to be treated. I included the excerpts of the manual, which specifically says that the infiltration basin can be used to hold the stormwater quality manual. It's clear as day in the manual states. Comment forty seven is the same comment as it relates to percolation tests. So that's all I have, um, at this point. I also have, uh, I'm just going to submit for the records of getting like, uh, a letter from Dr. Vanser. Dr. Klein or Mr. Klein. Oh, actually, before I get to that, let me just hand this out. This is important. So I have a full drainage report, which is way too boring for you guys. So I'm giving you the Cliff Notes aspect of this.
Thank you.
Although if anyone has trouble sleeping, I can provide it. I have extra copies. So what this is, is this is a review. Please send me your, your entire report.
Thank you.
Yep, the. So what this is, is this is a summary of the peak rates of runoff as we originally submitted it, and then the peak rates of runoff with Mr. Trinkus's revisions that he requested. So we can see that for the area west of the house, uh, we had a percent reduction in all storm events in the peak rate of runoff of approximately twelve percent. That includes the hundred year storm. If you remember at the beginning of my presentation today, the twenty three stormwater quality manual states that you only have to potentially attenuate the hundred year storm, not attenuate. Not only did we attenuate it, we decreased it by twelve percent. Now, just for clarification, if you recall and were listening earlier, I stated that we were actually reducing the runoff by a hundred percent. But when you look at my watersheds and the proposed, we still have existing areas that are draining, draining. So I have to take those into consideration. But any area that is part of my actual developable area is a hundred percent reduction in the peak rate of runoff. And so then if you look at the peak rates revised per Trinkus recommendations, now we're ten to eleven instead of twelve percent. And then similarly, east of the house, southeast of the house is, is very similar. There's some areas actually where we increase the reduction in runoff. Um, one other thing that I want to hand out as part of the drainage report is the water quality volume because. is the water quality volume, because when I originally did the water quality volume calculations, I did those for one inch of rainfall. Now that's consistent with the 2004 Connecticut stormwater quality manual. But as I indicated earlier, the twenty-three manual looked at 40 years of precipitation data for Connecticut. And they determined that 90% of all runoff events were basically 1.3 inches or less. So what I did was I revised my water quality volume calculations to reflect the 1.3 inches instead of the one inch.
And the 1.3 is the 2023?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
So when we look at that, what we see is that the required water quality volume for two oh one C, which is the system on the left, the required water quality volume is 1,045 cubic feet, we're providing 5,800 cubic feet. Uh, the system two oh two A, which is the system to the right, uh, 1,045 is required and we're providing 6,500. And then the smaller system, which only takes the roof runoff and a little bit of a patio, that has a requirement of 1,045 and we're providing 140. So here's Dr. Danzer's report, um, Doc, Mr. Klein had stated that he thought some additional analysis had to be done of the wetland system and the habitat out there. Dr. Danzer didn't necessarily agree, but I told Dr. Danzer to do it, so we did. Um, so him and his assistant went out there uh, and took a, a very detailed analysis as it related to the wetland systems on site. He looked at the area that Mr. Klein had a concern of potential wetlands. He looks at, uh, every single comment that Mr. Klein had and then responded in detail to each of those comments. Um, so that they were, uh, fully and completely addressed. So as I stated earlier, I'll get a copy of that to Julie, so then she can send that over to Mr. Klein for his review, along with everything that I submitted on my end.
Okay.
Thanks.
Obviously, for a while, for everybody to read. So Steve, you want to take time to review everything and then we'll, we could continue this hearing and?
Yeah, I would, Steve Tranks to the record, I always want, uh, you know, complete set of revised plans and full stormwater report. So I can go through all the responses with respective docs. Um, actually, a couple of quick comments on the water quality, Paul, just handed out. If you look, you know, the first page, we have a 64% impervious cover, which gives you a, uh, a runoff coefficient of 0.63 and a drainage area of 0.45, so that comes out to 1,045. When you go to page two, we have a 48% impervious cover, which gives you, um, actually, it should be a little bit different value, but the same calculation is there. The area is now 0.51 acres, but 0.45 is used. Because what's showing here is you're seeing the same runoff, uh, water quality volume calculation for each drainage area, which is not correct, the area varies as does the runoff coefficient. So the volumes need to be adjusted correctly.
Okay.
If you look at this data there, um, a question for Paul, you use HydroCAD, Paul?
No, I have, well.
I guess so, okay. Well, they're all based on TR-55 methodology, which in HydroCAD, which is the more commonly used model, under shallow concentrated flow, there's a whole list, it's not just paved or unpaved. The TR-55 came out in the late seventies, early eighties, when, quite honestly, that model was began to be used as urban hydrology. A little history on TR-55, it was developed by the NRCS or the old Soil Science Society for agricultural use only. It was never peer reviewed by anybody, it was never quite honestly intended for what we use it for today. Um, but it has become the model of choice. But for shallow concentrated flow, there are vegetated surfaces, there's paved, you know, there's woods, there's a lot of choices. It's simply not paved or unpaved. If Intellisolve doesn't give you that option, you know, you should consider using a model to more accurately reflect it. Um, the purpose of my comments primarily on the watershed areas and the curve numbers is to get the most accurate hydrologic model you can on a site. And yes, it, it changes in pre-development, it changes in post-development, but you want an accurate hydrologic model um, as far as that goes. Um, the, both the oh four and 2023 manual, these pollutant ratings that are sitting in there, high, medium, low, there's no, no numerical values provided for them in any of the manuals at all, there never has been. Um, secondly, a catch basin with a deep sump and a hooded outlet based on field monitoring data, primarily, uh, New Hampshire Stormwater Center plus the ASE BMP database is 9% of sediment TSS removal, that's not a high value by any measure. So you have to take those with a huge grain of salt. Um, so I will review everything, but the, the conditions on the site with gravel, while gravel is great for infiltrating water, there's absolutely no argument with it. The problem is, in the gravel, there's absolutely no treatment of the water running through the gravel material. All infiltration practices require pre-treatment. Infiltration basins do, trenches do. And you need to reduce the pollutant loads before you put it in a media that basically the water is going to rush through it. And it doesn't provide treatment because simply it moves too fast through the gravel. So I'll reserve other comments till after I see all the revised information. Uh, hopefully, you know, can you send them electronically, Paul, or?
I just gave it to you there, you see.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So if I could just ask a couple of quick questions, just to clarify. So, so this is TR-55, this is the actual manual. This isn't a computer program that, what it's based on, so here's shallow concentrated flow.
I, I, I understand.
Uh, Steve, with all due respect, I'm talking, please let me finish, I, I don't interrupt you. For shallow concentrated flow, it says after determining average velocity, use equation three one to estimate travel time for the shallow concentrated flow. You then look at the chart. On the chart, and this is included at the back of my letter, so you all can see it. There's two things, paved and unpaved. So if a program then builds upon that and does something, it's not, it, it's building on, but this is, this is the manual. This, this isn't a particular program that one engineer has used. I can tell you hydrolographs has paved and unpaved. Doesn't matter at the end of the day, this is the manual. You can't argue with the manual. You know, and Steve's saying that there's no pollutant reduction benefit of the underground infiltration system. His statement is completely contrary to the twenty-three manual. So one question I have for Steve is what's the largest number of four by four by eight concrete galleries that you ever proposed for a single family home? Be honest.
For, for septic, actually, for one in West, in Fairfield, after a bunch of fire retention systems, it was 20 units, only because the town engineer required it. But the water was never going to leave the fire retention system. Um, simply providing volume does not equate to treatment. And I'll address, I'm not going to debate this tonight, but I will address it in a follow-up letter.
Well, let me ask you, Steve. Well, this is very similar to a septic system in my mind. Uh, that water is going underground, gets released slowly through piping. And it's going through sand and gravel. Why wouldn't that affect pollutant loading? Because it does for septic systems.
In a septic system, um, years ago, Dudley Ashwood, who was an engineer in Southbury, designed a large system for Riverbend, the nursing care that's at the corner of sixty, uh, Main Street and 172. The 20,000 gallon a day system, so it was a huge system. Multiple rows, thousands of feet of four by four galleries in sand and gravel. When they put in the initial four or 500 feet of them, they connected the forest main, which is a four inch pump line to the gallery system because they needed to dig out a portion of the old system to replace it. When that pump was on, shooting four inch diameter pipe, that water came into the four by four gallery and disappeared within 12 foot from the end of it. Where the water came in, it simply disappeared into the gravel. In sand and gravel soils, what treats the effluent is the eventual uh, creation of the biomat, the bacteria that ultimately restricts the flow into the soil.
Right.
That's truly what does it. In commercial systems, which we have many in Southbury, you know, everything, all the big commercial stuff on South, on Main Street is all onsite. Septic and gravel. And all of them initially when they're, in there, that water just zips right into the gravel, it doesn't pond. And you're not getting treatment because the permeability rates are on the order of 150 to 300 feet per day.
But this is underground, how could it, how could it affect the water?
Because the grab, the grab, well, because ultimately that groundwater is following topography down.
Right, so you're saying it'll pollute groundwater?
You'll pollute the shallow groundwater, which will bleed out into the, into the edge of the river.
That's right, I, I mean, I get that, I'm just.
That's what's happening.
I'm not clear. In an urban environment, I could see why that would be a concern, but in a rural environment, I don't see.
It's kind of the death of a thousand cuts. I disagree with the philosophy, well, I'm only 1.3% impervious cover, therefore I shouldn't treat the water. Well, that's the argument of death by a thousand cuts, because, okay, 1.3% here, 1.5% there. All of a sudden, you're way over 10% watershed. This was, I believe, a similar discussion, um, I think Mark Lancore actually brought it up on the, the woods development when Mark took it over, making that same argument. But you need to treat the runoff, you have a lot of directly connected impervious cover, you've got the driveway coming down the hill to the house site, you've got a 5200.
So you treat it before it goes into the infiltrator?
You want to treat it, reduce the non-point source pollutant loads.
And how do you do that? Because he does say in a lot of his, and I've read all the stuff that, that, you know, trenches and swales accumulate, you know, clean out certain.
If these were in a sandy loam soil, an organic soil, instead of in bank on sand and gravel, you would get treatment through the organic soil. However, in sand and gravel, that's basically inert, non-organic material. There is not treatment, there's no biological activity.
I'll
Okay.
I'll put it in writing form after I review everything, Russ.
I, I just want to understand it.
There are practices that can be done to provide treatment before it goes into the galleries to get rid of the water. Um, and all infiltration practices do require pre-treatment under the, under both guidelines and, you know, under the, the world of LID, because there's plenty of case studies out there, there, um, for infiltration practices, except all the water being directed to them, not just the water quality, uh, volume. Uh, and it's more true of infiltration basins, but that you can wind up clogging the systems over time. Because this, the increased flows, and let's go back, you know, quite honestly, two and a half weeks to, you know, the storm we had, you know, in Southbury, Roxbury, Oxford, you know, it, it was beyond an act of God event, quite honestly, I mean, you know, but, you know, there was surprisingly, several sites held up remarkably well, developed communities. Um, and what really happened was small streams were what got killed. Woody degree came down, clogged culverts, the water rose up and then cut a new path through the road, many of the crossings were destroyed, the pipes are actually still in place to show you the power of water. But, you know, that, that's why when you're on top of the slope here, and that's my concern with the erosion controls. In the event the site was being worked on and you had a storm event hit like we had two weeks ago, you'd have a lot of turbid water at the bottom of the hill, in the river, because that singular barrier would simply be overwhelmed. And what the cause of the primary issue was.
You can't design for that kind of storm.
You can't design for it, but redundant barriers, I mean, hay bales, I've seen hay bales ever since, you know, late seventies when I got into this. The contrary to the best details on the plans and you can look at them, virtually every place you can put your hand between two hay bales, they're never tightly budded. Um, most contractors have never put them in the three inch deep trench.
They have silk fence behind them.
But it's a singular barrier, if you have a silk fence here that's 30 inches tall and you have a hay bale that's 18 inches tall, you only have 18, if it overtops the hay bale, it's on, it's only 18 inches below the silk fence. What you should do is, a redundant barrier is two silk fence, three or four feet apart. If one fails, you've got the other one to catch it. Or the use of a Filtrix sock, like an 18 inch Filtrix sock as a primary control, because that lays on the ground surface, it's like a, think of it as a big python.
All right, that's, that's really stuff for.
But you, you walk on it and you start stake it in place, it doesn't have to be in a trench. Put a silk fence three feet downhill, you have a very effective barrier. I've used those on many sites and the water's never gotten past the sock. So it's, it's putting an erosion barrier in that really does its job and then, you know, there's not a lot of potential problems with getting them in place.
Yeah. So. Gil, is it okay for the experts to talk offline? Do they have to, like, could they collaborate?
Um, uh, it's actually up to the commission, we usually like to know what they're saying to each other.
Well, what they're saying to each other is very technical and I think the commission would just like to know the bottom line.
Yeah.
I, as another attorney, believe that it's often very effective because they can have these conversations where they're talking about two different forms of reasonable engineering practices that are both accepted and they can get to it, so.
Yeah, and just so, and just so everyone knows, like, our clients gave us the directives to go above and beyond. So like, we're not here to argue. Like, I believe staked hay bales are going to work, Steve believes silk socks are going to work better. I'll do silk socks, I don't care. But if there's a prob, but if there's a problem, I don't want to be held responsible because I believe staking hay bales.
Stamp it.
But I believe staking hay bales, you know, every two to three feet trenched in the ground is more stable than a sock. Steve disagrees, I'm okay with that, I'll do it. You know, if Steve wants me to add some organic media on the bottom of the infiltration trenches, tell me what you want, I'll do it, I don't care.
Well, that's why I think.
I'm not saying that, for the record, I'm not saying that, but let me review the stuff if I have questions.
Right, and I think it would be good, it's my own opinion, I'd like to hear from the commission. I think it'd be good if they just talked to each other.
Because they can, they can report back.
Right.
Yeah.
We're like flexible, like silly buddy, any reasonable request that Steve has won't incorporate.
I, but I'd rather.
I don't know if I'm supposed to say, I don't know if Jim wants me to say that.
No, I, no, I, look, my observation, so my comment to Mr. Trinkus is, you have very strong opinions about a broad and generally accepted engineering practices that you personally don't like. And so I would just say to you, you have the right to have that opinion. But I think when you have that opinion, it would be helpful to all of us if you were at least acknowledging that generally accepted engineering practices are being proposed. And then if you think the commission might consider some subset of that, that you seem to be quite strongly advocating for, you should phrase it that way. Uh, you keep saying you want, what, you know, to the commission in your comments, and the reality is, it's not what the commission, it's you want, you, Mr. Trinkus, want. And I just think you need to be more forthright in the zealous, narrow methods in which you seem to be okay with.
The commission wants a plan
Right.
that is protective of the environment no matter what.
Right.
I don't care if you use a sock, a hay bale. If I could get the, if the commission could hear two experts agree, and that's one thing that always bothered me about being in wetlands and being involved myself as an expert.
Right.
Is how could two experts not come to an agreement when it's science we're talking about?
Well, because they're using two different models, like the, the example he just gave tonight is a reasonably accepted model for measuring one thing Mr. Trinkus doesn't believe should be used. Now, that's a, that's his professional opinion that he's entitled to have it.
Right.
What I think they should be doing is consulting and hopefully working out nine out of 10 of the questions they have between them. And if there are, you know, 10% that they don't reach agreement on, they come back to the commission and the commission, they make their play and the commission chooses which one they want.
Right. Right.
That's what I would recommend. But it requires a commitment on both sides to get to a solution.
Let me just say, young intent for the record, I didn't hear any assumption that there's not a commitment to get to the right, the right plan here. So, and, uh, Mr. Trinkus has said he doesn't have a problem with having a discussion. And if they can report back to us that there are things that are still outstanding, we can figure out with those out, that outstanding litigants. It seems to be helpful to the commission and a lot of this stuff is, a lot of this is very technical.
Right, and that's why I want that to happen between that. And then come back to us with what they agree with and what they don't agree with. And then the things they don't agree with is up to the commission as that, which expert that they find more credible.
It's really sort of no different than what the process usually is, but it's a little more efficient to do it this way, which is another letter going back, another letter coming back, and finally, you know, a letter saying, okay, I'm satisfied. you know, a letter saying, okay, I'm satisfied with all the changes. I mean, that, almost every technical application has that posture. There is no reason why they cannot discuss this with each other, determine what issues they can't agree on, and bring them back and let the commission know.
Okay.
I have one question. I heard a lot of, uh, the, the W E O will, will come and check this and check that.
I was thinking that.
At the beginning.
Okay, but he only works part-time, and it just seems like there's gonna be an overburden for John.
So just to clarify, the construction sequence just states he's to inspect the original installation of the erosion control measures. Then I'm to inspect prior to the rain event and after the rain event. And then if the commission wants some sort of reporting mechanism, or a report on a monthly or bi-monthly basis, that's fine. The only thing that we show in the sequence of John's participation is the initial. This way it ensures that, you know, he, he's in agreement that, yeah, that silk fence is, is the way he wants it, so to speak. And, you know, just like we were just saying, we may disagree a little bit. To make sure there's a collaborative environment between staff and us, so his expectations are met throughout the entirety of the project. Uh, the idea was, knowing his part-time nature, he sets the expectations at the beginning. We know what those expectations are, and then we demonstrate through our reporting to staff and the commission that his expectations are being met.
Yeah, the problem though is John is not an erosion control expert, nor is he an engineer. And then, and, and Tom's like, I do a lot of work in Monroe, which I hate, like you, all the night meetings, wanna stop.
Well, I'm not saying what specific town.
They have a town engineer who happens to be really good. Um, so they, they have that, they have that on staff. We don't, we have John who has the certification as a wetland enforcement officer, which is an eight-hour course. Right? That we all have to take, or most of us. Um, I would like it if initially an engineer does that with John.
Cause like, what'd you guys do on, cause I wasn't here for the regular meeting, cause I was away. Like, what'd you guys do for the Wellers Bridge application? Cause that had a similar distance to the, uh, Chapala, and it had a steeper slope, so.
Well, it's a whole different, it's a whole.
Cause that was fully forested with litter, so that had erodible soils.
It was a whole different thing, a much smaller house, blah, blah, blah. But Brian has to notify us. And then we have to approve the plan, but it's a much simpler plan, Paul. It's much, it's light years.
To talking about this application.
Right.
Mr. Oregon, to your point, I have seen in other applications where it's a condition of the approval that there's a time, a time-measured reporting requirement. So for example, when that's bi-weekly or weekly or monthly, you could require that a report be submitted during the project to the, the commission as to, you know, reconfirming that all of those things remain in place and, and as to any other things, progress of the, the job or where they are in that construction sequence stage.
Right, and that's similar to what we did at the woods, is my point.
And this commission can require that there be an engineer that looks at those erosion measures when they're set up and in place.
Or a landscape.
Get it, which, whoever, yeah, the expert looks at that. So you can require that as part of your approval.
Okay.
And I think on their plan, I haven't read your, your, your plan, but maybe it's all in there already.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and we'll look at it and make sure that everyone feels comfortable with whatever we decide.
In the beginning, cause that's the critical time, that we have an independent professional saying, yep, it's all set the way it is.
See, I disagree. I think the beginning is not the critical time, because that's when everyone behaves and pays attention. What happens is over the course of the project. Just like in life, we all get fat and lazy. So that's why we incorporate not only the initial, but more importantly, during construction, that prior to a quarter inch of that and after a quarter inch of that, cause a lot of the failures that I see aren't that first. It's, okay, the erosion control are in, and then no one ever shows up again, and the contractor's out there barreling around, doing whatever he wants.
That's my concern. Yeah, that's my concern. Because you know and I know, I don't want NOVs after we.
No, I mean, all due respect, I don't want to come to another night meeting.
Pain in the butt for me, it's a pain in the butt for John.
Yeah. No, I'd rather be taking my kid to a baseball game than being here, so.
Right.
We're aligned.
Or watching another debate.
I prefer the baseball game.
Does anybody from the public here are here to comment? Does anybody from the public want comment? Okay.
You wanna see if Mike Klein has any comments?
Pardon?
Klein has anything to say?
Michael Klein.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't forget, Mike. I just wanted to make sure, cause some people may want to leave, who that are here, but. Michael, uh, do you want to talk about your report? I know we just got a response to it, and you're gonna need time to review that.
Or is there anything you want to add to the commission?
At this time, I think I'd much rather, um, review, uh, the plans have been revised, the, Dr. Danzer's report has been revised. Um, I'd rather look at the revised report um, and the revised plans and make any further comments at that time. I guess the only other thing I would add is that meeting the D E Ps or D E E Ps, engineering standards. First of all, they're minimal, minimum standards. And second of all, um, that's not the same thing as determining that there's no impact on the regulated resources, just as designing a septic system to meet the requirements of the health code is not the same thing as saying there's not gonna be a, uh, an impact on water quality or wetlands or any of the, uh, resources that are regulated by this commission. Um, so I'll just leave it at that. Um, my written, you know, I'm, I'm happy to, uh, participate if the commission desires in the meetings, um, with the, uh, applicants, experts, or, um, or not. That's, that's up to you. I, I do agree that, a, uh, oral discussion, um, can facilitate, uh, matters. I was expecting that we would have a set of revised plans and reports to review prior to, um, this meeting tonight, so that I could make some comments. Obviously, that didn't happen. The internet connection, um, that you all have up there in Roxbury isn't all that um, strong, so I missed a little bit. Um, there may have been some discussion about why that happened. It doesn't really matter. Um, but, um, as far as any detailed comments go, um, without having seen the revised plans, I think they'd be superfluous.
Okay.
I have, I have one more comment, uh, Mr. Chairman, and that is, uh, there have been some side visit reports, side visits that have taken place on the side.
Right, they're all separate.
Yes, but those individuals need to, they can do it at the next meeting verbally.
Well, we have at the meeting. Are you saying you want that done at the public hearing?
Either, either there should be a, a writing about what they saw, or there should be an oral, just a verbal, is it, went out to the property, we walked, here's what we saw, these are the things we need to have, if, if it's, if those are gonna be taken into consideration in a decision, it's important that there be some evidence of that on the record.
Okay.
Chris, Chris did submit a report.
Even if it's not.
The last meeting, if you remember.
Pardon?
Chris submitted a report at the last meeting.
Chris.
Or, uh, who's your other commissioner? Right?
Yeah, Chris.
You were thinking I was, I was thinking I was crazy, cause Russ was looking at me like I'm crazy. All right, you're making me, well, you're making me second guess myself. He submitted at the last, at the last meeting, he submitted his sidewalk.
Yeah, I think some other people have been out, because they didn't, they didn't have.
Because he wasn't here.
I think they simply need to note on the record that they visited the site.
I do, exactly.
That's all.
Yeah.
They don't need to say.
They can talk about what they saw or not, but they.
At the la, at the meeting, we all indicated. Who had visited the site.
We could just do this now. Do you want to do it now?
Yeah, let's do it.
Okay, I, I went, I forget who I went with, Sierra. Uh, I went twice, actually, once for the application that was pulled, and then this application. The first time I went in from the town park along the road, noticed a very big pond, uh, old railroad bed with a, and the grade comes up where the house is gonna go, and then it goes steeply down to the lake. So, I, I did wonder during the sidewalk, but didn't ask any questions, why the house can't be pushed back behind that. And, and that, that grade that goes up, that naturally protects the lake, can't, couldn't be, um, could be left in place to protect. But I wanted to hear everything first, before I went on and made that in my mind and, and stuck with it. I'm, I'm open. I'm listening to Paul, I'm listening to Steve. Um, I did notice the wildflowers that they planted all over the place, and the property is beautiful, it really is. Um, I, I stood where the Randina House was gonna be, because Paul brought it up. And I wondered why they wouldn't want the house there, because it's a better view. It doesn't take you that much farther from the lake, and let's face it, the lake isn't a place they're gonna wanna swim. There's turtles, there's snakes, there's all kinds of wildlife down there. Um, so that was my observations, and then from there, I decided, okay, let's see how they're gonna deal with this and protect it. The one thing that meant a lot to me is the protection of that slope. And I, I still don't know, and I'm, I'm sure we'll get to it, um, whether that slope is gonna be protected and nothing happens there, or whether there's a landscaping plan to landscape that slope, that that's what I'm focusing on.
You referring to the slope going down to the river from?
Right, right from there. Right from the hundred-foot buffer, right, we're doing, or erosion control down. And I haven't heard a lot about that in, in all of the talk, and I'm gonna ask more questions about that.
I've been off to the site twice. Once I trespassed, uh, Rob Oregon. Uh, once I trespassed, I rode down there without notifying anyone by myself, uh, on the first application. Second application, I went with, uh, Chris Haggard. Um, and Paul wa, uh, walked us through the site. My initial input on it was the same as Russ's. I always think more is better as far as distance from the wetlands, and, but I'll see how it plays out.
Right, that's exactly how it. John?
John, John Smolaga, yeah, I, I trespassed too. It's true confession tonight, I guess.
The whole commission will be in jail next month.
Yeah, that was for the first application. I, I thought that we were told we could just go look at it, but, uh.
No, oh, well. You know what? Well, I don't think we were told anything in the first application.
The first application.
The second one, you came with me.
Yeah, 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 that's what I did, because we were told that, but, yeah, yeah, anyway.
So we unwittingly, unwittingly trespassed.
Yes, because there were no signs saying no trespass. Right. Anyway, so, uh, no, I had similar impression to, um, that, uh, i- it's the slope going down to the river that, uh, you know, kinda caught my eye. There's, um, plenty of room to, to move it back, but like Rob and Russ said, you know, I wanna hear the full plan, the details of it, and, and how things are gonna be treated to protect the river.
Right. Sue.
Oh, by, by the way, this, this second walk I went with Kathy Ross.
Okay.
And Paul walked us through there.
Right. Well, Paul was at all of them.
No, no.
Knows about.
Sue Fitch, I went with Paul, and.
Did you trespass?
No, I was with Paul. And actually, I think on the first app, first time, like, I drove in trying to figure out, and I couldn't figure it out, so I said, I'm not. You know, so, anyway, um, I kind of, when we were walking through the property, I kind of was wondering, like you guys were, is why the house wasn't pushed further back. I think that would be like north, right, or something, north, uh, north. Um, so, you know, but I said I'm willing to hear. I mean, I was quite impressed with the property with the wildflowers, and it seemed that they're interested in wanting to keep things natural and encourage that. So in my mind, I was like, I wanna see what plan they wanna bring forth to the commission, and hoping that what I'm seeing, um, how their stewards right now of the prop, you know, the property, the small area that they've had develop, you know what, they had planned for the rest of the property. But my big concern is maintaining the quality of the water, of the Chapag, and extremely concerned about what would happen with like that hundred foot past the retaining wall, because it not, it's not even, it's not Bridgewater, it's not Roxbury property or whatever, but there's, um, down further, um, there used to be a, a piece of property that I think was an old camp. And I just couldn't, I went, you know, I didn't know that the construction was taking place, cause I hadn't, this was like a couple of years ago. Hadn't gone kayaking down there in a while, and I went kayaking down, and I almost just started crying, because it was just so horrific. What was allowed for them to develop all the way up to the waterfront, and how awful it looked, and here you're on this really peaceful out there, cause it's a, the river through there is just gorgeous. And, you know, full disclosure, I live like across the street, so I have spent tons of time over in the Roxbury Land Trust, hiking over there and everything, and, um, then the kayak trip a little bit of a ways down, cause it's past like, you know, where that, where Berry Road ends. If you keep on going, and it would be to the left, and it.
So you're not talking about this prop?
No, but what I'm, okay, but all I'm get, was mentally, what I'm thinking was that it just was horrific, what they had done.
So all you have to do is go to Lake Wormog, go to Candlewood.
But.
I, I mean, it's, it's all around.
But this is a very peaceful lake to go.
So was Lake Wormog at one time.
Yeah, it used to be.
So anyway, that was, you know, so that's, I just wanted to see what was gonna be presented, and I just was, you know, for what I saw from right now, how they're taking care of the property, that I was hoping, you know, to hear that, you know, things that the lake, the lake river's gonna be protected, and that, you know, they're interested too in maintaining, um, a property that's gonna be enjoyable.
Right. And I felt that, I can't really, Paul said it right. If there's no impact where the house is now, I don't wanna have him move it back, just for the sake of having him move it back. So, but I, I need to assure myself there's not gonna be an impact. Because as we've learned, when there is an impact on something that you approved, there's no going back. Right? So that's how I feel. I'm really listening, uh, and I wanna make sure that if we approve this, it's, it's clad iron, that, that river's not gonna be impacted.
I think we requested a landscape plan.
Yeah, we can, that's not a problem. I, that, I took note, that's why I walked over here. I took note of that, you guys brought up the area between the rear of the house and down. Upgrading as well, and we'll show the area that's being taken as better.
I wasn't so concerned about the upgrading portion, more the.
Yeah, from the retaining wall down.
Yeah.
Well, that, and I still want to understand what development may occur to get down to the lake. They're gonna walk.
That's simple. We had prior, we had prior approval from this commission.
Right, but other than that.
There's nothing.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that.
That's why I took some of you guys over there. The, the path exists. There's an existing grass path that's somewhat, oh, sorry. That's somewhat maintained, and then they just have a level area there with a kayak rack. That's all they have.
I just wanna.
Already.
Make sure.
They already permitted that, and they did only a portion of the activities that were permitted, the permit since expired.
Yeah, I know, we walked down there.
Yeah.
Okay.
But that's their, that's their activity.
And when Sue says she was sad, I thought that was put you fucking.
No, no, no.
Where is this location, just so I know? Is it in town or?
It's south, I, no, it, it's Southbury.
Okay.
You know, like, if, uh, per, um.
Purchasing?
Yeah, but it. Yeah, but it, yeah, it's, it's, yeah, but, but it, but I mean, I almost like, I, I was sick to my stomach because it was always this really cool, old, you could tell like camp that people had for years and years and years. And the family probably sold it and they went in, but they, they planted lawn right up to the, and just, yeah, okay.
How do they get away with that? I, I.
Sure, it's real green too.
That was, uh.
Really green.
And nobody, nobody kayaks on the, no?
I do.
Have you kayaked on that?
I'll have to go again and see what I'm looking at.
You gotta go, it's a little bit down there, a little bit ways down.
I don't, I don't think I go that far, so. Okay, anything else?
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, we'll, we'll continue the public hearing to allow our consultants to, and, and ourselves to read what we've been given tonight. In the meantime, Steve and Paul, we welcome you to.
We need extensions. I need, we need a written extension. First, we have an oral extension, huh?
No, I submitted a letter.
Okay, I didn't see it.
I C C'd you.
Okay, I, I may have left the office by the.
Yeah, we have that.
Yeah, okay. But we're going to need it now.
It's already been C C, it's already been.
Thirty-five days, okay. So we need to know if you're going to extend this out, hearing out within thirty-five days.
Well, we need to put a date.
Should we do it at the next meeting?
Well, will they have time to review it?
Yeah, that's just a couple of weeks, right?
Yeah.
It's a couple of weeks.
You just gave a pretty exhaustive point by point response to Steve. Steve will go through and it, I, I can't imagine they can resolve ninety-five percent of the way.
Say in the next meeting.
You have time to do it.
What day is that?
Huh?
Two weeks away.
Two weeks. Is that okay?
I think it's.
I think, I think so, Russ.
So we.
You want to say the date and time so that it, the continued hearing is noted for that time, right?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have a continued hearing. Uh, what's the date too?
Uh, the twenty-fourth.
The twenty-fourth.
How about Michael?
September twenty-fourth at six thirty?
How about Michael?
Mike, you okay with that?
Um, actually I'm not. Um, sorry to be, uh, difficult, but I will be out of town until, uh, the nineteenth of September. Um, if we're going to get uh, either agreement on things or revised plans to reflect those a, a week prior to a meeting, that's not going to happen if you need my input.
How about? Well, October first is a selectmen meeting, right? How about the eighth?
I'm sure I'm away.
Does that, is the eighth within the thirty-five days?
Yeah, you, um, well, the, the hearing opened tonight.
Right.
You're here on the tenth.
Right.
So.
So we're well within.
Yeah.
We could do even that because that's just twenty-eight days, so.
Yeah, I can make the second important Tuesday of October, so it's one.
Is the eighth good?
No.
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 I mean, can we, can we continue it to the regular meeting? Maybe Steve and I have the opportunity to work through the engineering comments, give you an update. And then the environmental comments are continually worked for.
I, but I got to set a public hearing date tonight.
Yes. So I was suggesting is the engineering comments, the public hearing be continued to your regular meetings in two weeks. And we go over the engineering aspect. So it's sort of broken up. And then at the, whatever the next continuance is, then the environmental aspect gets discussed.
You, you'll have to give us a, um.
Yeah.
Okay, because you get sixty-five days of extensions, right?
Correct.
Right.
We use twelve. But it's thirty-five from the.
We use twelve, alright. So.
I think, I, Mr. Klein may not be available, but there's also a chance that he and Mr. Danzer could speak and also have a lot to report back in two weeks if that's.
Okay, so we'll, 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 uh, continue the public hearing to, to the next meeting, September twenty-fourth at six thirty. Everybody on board with that?
Yep.
Sure.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Wait, wait, what?
I'm sorry.
Okay, so we're, so I just want to get this straight. So we're going to do a pub, a public hearing on the, uh, twenty-fourth before the regular meeting.
Yes.
And then we could be having another public hearing again? Is that correct?
Continued.
Okay, alright, alright.
And hopefully end it in October.
The goal is for everybody to stay awake during each public hearing. That's why we have to break it up.
Talk to your consult.
Andy, Julie, so it'll be a special meeting for the six thirty time, right?
Um, the regular meeting time is seven?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Is it easier?
You'd notice it.
Do it at seven? Does it have to be a special meeting if it's at seven?
Uh, no, it's a public hearing.
Okay.
The reason why it's a special meeting is we're adjourning the public hearing and then we're going into a special meeting. I did that. I put it on the agenda in case we wanted to vote.
You had to because in a special meeting, you can't add anything to the agenda.
Right. So I would make a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Let's.
Second. Any discuss, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now I'm going to open the special meeting for, what, what's the date today?
The tenth, the tenth, tenth.
September tenth, twenty twenty-four, special meeting to discuss the, um, the application. And there's nothing to discuss because we agreed that we're going to continue the public hearing. Now, why did I do this? What if, what if we got all the information and we wanted to vote tonight and get it over with? We had that option. That option isn't an option right now. So, okay?
That is precisely right.
Thanks.
So now I'll now make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, guys.
Good night.
We gotta put these chairs up here.
No, please.
Ah, but, but Pat doing it.
Okay, I'm in with your, your public hearing.